If you wanted to and they were available, if you kind of, for lack of a better term, were a snowbird. You could, if there were available licenses, you got one, you go to Florida for four months or whatever in the winter, you can use that as a short-term rental. Correct? Is the way we're, the way we're talking about short-term rentals? Obviously, you'd have to come in and get licensed. So to me, doesn't that make it a little sticky? Because now somebody could run out on a short-term rental, could rent out their primary residence because they're in, out of state for X amount of months, so. And, but if they had a mother-in-law's or a small apartment above the garage or whatever, they couldn't rent that out. How does, I mean, it gets a little sticky.
I don't disagree. I think there's a, the line between the two is confusing. I guess is a way that I initially interpreted, right? I mean, I understand the need and I'm not saying that there isn't possibly a need for it. Especially with our economic times and the aging of our, of us all people, right? You know, I think there is a need and desire for it. I guess I wonder how do we, without making a mountain of, you know, restrictions or hoops to jump through, how do we do this? And that would be just a jumbled up complicated mess between that and any other rental type unit.
Almost opening the can of worms a little bit on the.
Well, I guess that's what I'm wondering. And there again, I'm not sold on that statement, but I kind of feel that, you know?
Could be creating an enforcement nightmare to, you know, to enforce it.
Yeah, it's one thing to do it, it's another thing, how do we enforce it?
Well, and, but to your point, Terry, I know, I know of a couple of families that have handicapped children that would like to live on their own.
They need.
But they need to be close. And if you had, you know, like off the garage, attached on a three hundred square foot little apartment for them, it would give them their independence, but they'd still be close at hand, you know what I'm saying? And.
But Barb, wouldn't, if it's attached, would that just be a, an addition to the existing dwelling? I think the key, the key is when you go to a separate attached or tech-separate building away from, because I have a couple of neighbors that are, you know, I have a daughter that, and they remodeled their house.
Right.
And made that provision in their remodel of the house, but they really didn't make the, a separate dwelling.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yep, yep. There's actually one over on, uh, Walker off a six-mile road that did a beautiful job of adding on a mother-in-law's suite. It's like, there's the house, there's the garage, and you can tell they added on, and it, it's beautiful.
That's just below the hill.
Yep, just below the hill. It's gorgeous.
They did an excellent job.
They did a fabulous job.
So currently, we, you could do that right now, right? Or not.
So if there's, usually if there's like a shared door, then it, you know, I mean, I'd use my situation for example. My mom lives with us. She has a space in the basement. We haven't put in, you know, a secondary kitchen or not, but there would be no way for, for me as a zoning administrator that know that I just put in a mother-in-law suite that probably technically would be considered a separate dwelling unit. You put in sleeping quarters and a kitchen and a bathroom, but as long as it's in the existing bell, building and it's, you know, a shared entry in extra way, then it still needs the intent.
But if it had its own entryway, does that?
Well, even if, even if it does, though.
Yeah.
You know, Barb, I mean, it.
Well, I noticed that on one of these, that it said something about.
From a, from a, from a safety standpoint, right?
Yeah.
For getting out from a fire code situation. Do you have any grasp other than stairway?
Yeah, there's like five different ways you should get out of the house.
So you have a walkout.
Yeah, but it's, it's one garage, it still looks like a single-family home. I think the only way that we would really be able to know if there's an attached, like, mother-in-law suite or accessory dwelling is that they, like, really just essentially built a duplex, put on a second garage or related something.
That was the, that was the one item, item five in the, in Osco to the township reference sheet. You know, that, that talks about a single-family dwelling and it may occupy a basement, first floor or second floor in the principal dwelling, right? I mean, so that's kind of what we're referring to there. But why, if it is that way, do we really want to have the ruling and the compliance requirements for, it's still a single-family dwelling? Essentially, right?
That's where we have to look at the definition of zoning ordinance too, and I believe, not verbatim, but the, the definition of a single family or family as far as, you know, related by blood and those sorts of things. So that's where, you know, I'm probably violating my own zoning ordinance right now because I have a buddy living with me for a few months. So right now, we looked at the true definition of a single-family, two-family, like, my home right now would be considered a two-family home because I've had a friend living up.
Just because you have somebody else living there, that doesn't make sense to me. I don't know any building code out there that tells you, you can build a house with only one kitchen. And I, I don't know any building codes that limits you on the amount of kitchens you can have, bathrooms you can have, bedrooms, right, square footage limitations, but not as far as amenities within it. And to me, if it's connected via interior door, it's just, you're just walking in from one part of your house to another part of your house.
Randy and I took care of a house in Ada that had three kitchens and ten bathrooms. So, I mean, literally. And it was only one family living there, so.
I think the one thing it just gets me is the detached part of it. You know, the detached puts that into a different thought process for me. If it's somehow connected to the, the existing dwelling unit, to Tim's point, I think you can make modifications as long as they're meeting the building codes, I think you'd be fine. I think when you go detached, and the other thing about if it's, if somebody, you'll have a family member probably not gonna short-term rental, uh, part of your house, you know, of the same dwelling to somebody for a short-term rental, but a detached one would be very.
Well, you'd be surprised, A, Airbnbs and VRBO.
Yeah.
Where they do rent out bedrooms and you share the kitchen with the rest of the people here Airbnb with. So, not that I would like that, but they do it, so. But I, I, I agree. I think we need something.
Just like I said, I don't, I, I don't think it's an issue if it's under the same roof and there's connection, interconnection in, underneath that roof.
But what if somebody doesn't want it attached to their.
Well, that's where it comes in, right? That's something totally different. You would have heard that if you'd have.
I'm terribly sorry. So sorry.
You heard my feeling.
Hell, we got one.
Yeah.
So, but the detached thing brings up a whole separate thing.
Interesting.
But I do see the need, I mean.
So if you was to build a detached garage that has a loft area in it, and the loft area is the accessory dwelling unit, how does that get separated?
So you're saying like a detached.
Detached garage.
So you file the square footage of our new buildings for that lot, whatever said lot is. But in that building, instead of it being an accessory building, technically it would be that detached living space.
Yes.
Right? Is that what you're saying?
But, but that, it's actually both, right? Because the lower level might be the garage for the residents, the primary residents. But the upper loft section would be the accessory dwelling unit. How do you differentiate between the two? Or do you, or what implications would that have? I guess that's my question, I don't know. Because I can very easily see that happen.
But there would have to be a main residence on the property.
Well, yeah, absolutely, yes. But what I'm saying is, it, it, my house, right? We don't have a garage or anything.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go out and I'm gonna build me a garage. I'm, I'm following the ordinances and all, everything we have in place for accessory buildings, right? I mean, all that requirements, and I say, okay, instead of me just putting up a garage, I'm gonna make it a loft garage because I have family come to town or, you know, my daughter's disabled, or whatever it may be. And I want to make that an accessory dwelling unit. Well, how do you differentiate the two-stall lower garage, which is part of the principal residence, from the upper section of that?
Would you have to?
We can put in language, you know. Let's see if you have minimum and maximum size.
And I guess that's my concern, because aren't we just creating more language and complications? And I'm not saying we aren't, and I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just, the questions are rolling around in my head, right?
Just concerned about the.
And, and there, back to Terry's statement, okay, we put all this in place, who places it?
Yep, it would be.
Like anything else that we've got, you know?
You'd go with separate meters on, you know, if I were to try to do it. And have separate sewer, sewers.
Yeah, that's for, uh, Scola, that's what they've got on here. There has to be separate meters.
Right.
So you're gonna meter the upper loft area in the garage?
That's probably where I would come back as a recommendation is like, I would say, as a township, you don't take one of the, have a separate meter or not, especially a lot of residents within township can have well and septic, but require health department approval. I have had conversations with the Kent County Health Department, and then it really depends on what's already there is, if the existing well and septic is able to support an accessory dwelling unit, they would review it and approve it. If not, then the county would require improvements to the system. So that'd probably be my recommendation to township in terms of well and septic, it's just.
For well and septic, I agree. I mean, I think that's the line it should follow, right? I mean, if the existing system can handle the additional load.
Because health department bases it on a number of bedrooms, kitchens, a few of the other items when they, when they issue a permit.
Bathroom sinks.
Right. Yeah, they look at the total water usage.
But there again, that's, that's different than metering gas or electric, right?
Right.
But gas or electric ea- easy, because if you wanted to do that without one, you just put remote meters in and it's just basically doing the math at the end of the month on usage. Because you can meter water and, you can have one main meter and sub-meter water and electric to each different suite that it goes to. But it's, like I said, then it's just doing the math. And I don't know if it's such a thing as if we do it, then has got condition of doing it and allowing it, then that property itself then would not be allowed to be, um, kind of used as a, as a temporary rental unit?
As a short-term rental.
Short-term rental.
There's a situation similar to what you're talking about hypothetically that actually is happening right now. It's not in, in our township. It's, it's not in one of your townships either, Kevin, that you're, because it's a person that I know.
Yeah.
But there, they have a detached garage and a dwelling unit. And they have, I'll say, a college-age son wants to come back to the house. Well, there's no room in the house. So they're gonna take that detached garage and they're gonna make it into a accessory dwelling unit. I'll just say per that township's requirements. But that I can see being a realistic thing, where this is currently like a three-stall garage, kind of what you were talking about, maybe not the whole thing being utilized, but I'll say two stalls of it. And then there's, there's a two-stall dwelling unit and then a one-stall garage for the person to live in. So that could be even on the older person or anything like that, or an older couple even.
I, oh, I'm sorry. Nope, I interrupted you. Please, no.
Anything. No, Barb. No, no, ladies first.
I was just gonna say where, on here, they've also got the size. You could have that.
Yep.
Unit, but only allowed so much fo- square footage in the loft made into the apartment, so.
True.
Please.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we're gonna run into this a lot more now that we've expanded our accessory building sizes. I think it's gonna, it's just gonna happen.
The flexibility of that is gonna give a lot of options.
Yep. Have more options available.
It's a great idea to put it on as a topic to talk about, that's for sure.
That's really it.
Especially seeing how we're doing the master planning.
Do barn, barn dominions come into effect on this too?
Could too.
Because they were talking about putting their parents up in part of the barn dominium that last, and second to last meeting we had.
Yeah, I mean, that would be something to, something to consider is, you know, as you look, build a barn dominium typically, there's one portion that's a dwelling, the rest of it's the barn. But I could see if you allow for accessory dwelling units. Hey, we got a barn dominium, I've got a dwelling on this end, and I've got a dwelling on that end.
How are we gonna know?
Right, because that is what, what just happened, because we, we just drew one up down in the Wayland area where they have a similar ordinance where an accessory, uh, structure or living space can only be X amount of square feet. So this guy that I do a lot of business with, he's got a massive barn. I mean, it's like almost fifteen thousand square feet. So what he did is, to meet the ordinance and move his mother-in-law in, he did the accessory building, right? Because he also wanted to make sure septic didn't fail and all that stuff, and he went through all the proper permitting stuff, got his final occupancy, guess how big her living space is? It went from like a thousand square foot to like thirty-five hundred square foot. Like, right after that, because it's not like you're going back and knocking on their door to measure square footage to get in their barn to measure square footage of what their accessory space is. And you, I think you're gonna have a lot of that.
I, I do too, and there again, how do you place it, right? How do you enforce it, right? I come to you and say, okay, I'm gonna build a two-story, two-stall garage. Well, next month, someone in my family gets hurt and they gotta have care. What's the logical thing to do if I'm gonna be responsible for that, right? I mean, in its instance is that you're not necessarily intending to start out going against the ordinance, but life happens.
Oh, no, it was just planned to go against the ordinance, so.
That, that, in that case may be, but, but there again, how do we stop that?
Tim, I have a question, a builder, like, the firewalls, fire codes and the different things for an occupa- occupancy area is, that would change based on like, okay, I'm gonna have a person in there versus having just a accessory building, right? I mean, you'd have to.
You need one hour of fire separation between the, the residence, the living space and the storage space.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
What if they moved cows and hens and?
Still need one hour separation between that and the living space. We're doing a, like a thirty thousand square foot, or no, I'm sorry, it's, this one's twelve thousand square foot. One in Cannon Township right now, and, and that's what their rule is, seven hundred and fifty square feet, so that's all they're getting. Now, that is their plan. They're gonna keep it that, so. So.
No, but they have to submit a plan, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And a one-hour fire separation on the walls and in the ce- on the ceiling because there's a storage area connected next to it.
That really would be the only place where we would catch something is, once, you know, the accessory building is built, and that's becoming the building inspector, you know, likely with something like that, I'd put a condition of zoning approval that I'm part of that final inspection. Then once that final inspection's done, you know, if it's inside the house, usually there's no zoning permit required and it's gonna be mighty hard to. Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's a lot of that going on in the home anyway.
I don't know, it's a complicated topic, it's, truly. I mean, I, I, I see the, for a need, if somebody comes in and says, okay, I wanna build another structure on my property that is for this intent, I think the need is there for that, right? But how do you not have the other side of that happen to where you build the two-stall garage and the loft area? Initially, it's all storage and you get your zoning approval and your occupancy report and.
And I mean, I, I use myself as an example again, you know, my wife works a hundred percent from home. So I was just texting her, hey, would you want something like this for an office? You know, gets you out of the house, gives you kind of a workspace to, you know, separate yourself a little bit more. She said, no, but if we would have done that, we could have built something up to twelve hundred square feet. It would have had kitchenette, a bathroom, probably all that stuff. And that's what we would have intended to use it for now, but ten years from now, it's a different job or something else happens.
Extra living space.
Extra living space. Hey, kids, you got your own apartment to go live in, you know? And doing this job, I would have known I was doing something wrong, but most people in that same situation would have never.
They know anything about it, right? No, you're right.
Well, what kind of action are we supposed to, other than discussing?
Yeah, you're the chairman.
Discussing.
You know, I think, I think we need to think on this a little bit more and maybe, do we need an open public meeting? Well, you know, I know one individual was going to be here tonight, but he had another meeting, John Colesel. Because I think he's talked to you about this situation.
Yeah, I haven't talked with John specifically about accessory dwelling units, but I know he's brought up the idea of allowing duplexes in more areas. That was kind of my feedback, Tim, is like, if that's something you, that you wanna promote, you know, come to the plan, commission it and love that.
I mean, it is, that's one of the comment I have on, in, in, in the justice of this, right? As far as manufactured home or mobile homes used as an accessory dwelling unit, I don't know that I would be in favor of that.
I wouldn't either. I like the idea, like I said, you limit to nothing less than three hundred, nothing more than nine hundred. And that serves the purpose of what we're discussing.
And going to what you just said, Dale, there, uh, yeah, mobile home, that's one thing. But we allow pre-manufactured homes all over the township. So as far as that as an accessory dwelling, if we go this route, I don't see a problem with pre-manufactured homes as an accessory. I do see a problem with mobile homes as an accessory build.
And that could be something we could write into is, um, meets minimum dwelling requirements, except the minimum square footage. So some of your minimum dwelling requirements right now.
Min and max square footage for that matter, right? I remember when you went both ends of the spectrum there.
Yeah, I would think so.
I know when my folks built the house I'm in right now, it was nine hundred square feet. My house is nine hundred and five square feet.
Keep this kind of going, maybe have a chance to maybe look at these a little bit more. What was this other information that you gave us now?
So that one, so there's the redevelopment-ready communities, that's a big package. And I've got some more stuff than just accessory dwelling units in there. They also have some recommended language from like Traverse City or some other, and other communities that have allowed for accessory dwelling units. But I've shared the whole package because it's easiest, and then there's some other concepts that they've uncovered and also, but. But I think kind of what I'm taking away from tonight's meeting is that this is definitely something you're open to. There's definitely some more food for thought for everybody. I'm gonna tell you, you're open to it. We'd wanna keep the language simple. We don't wanna overcomplicate it. It's probably not something that you'd wanna have a, a licensing, and obviously, this could be changed in the future too, but keep it simple. We're open to it, but there's some more thought.
You're a lot of restricted to certain zoning districts. I mean, obviously, you're gonna have to have a little bit more land than just a lot. By the time you put two septic systems in, two reserve areas in, two wells in, gonna have to be a pretty good size parcel.
If we are, if we truly indeed do make them do so, right?
Right.
Yeah. That would be, I, you know, I think the one thing that would be the plan to do is as you allow for accessory dwelling units, depending on how you allow them, that can change the character of the community of our area, you know? I go further, the far end of the spectrum where it's like, okay, everybody now has built an accessory dwelling unit in their backyard and renting it out to somebody. Because that's something we can't control is, if we create that short-term rental language, we can differentiate what's short-term rental, but we can't restrict somebody from renting out their house long-term to a family.
Right.
So now, instead of having one house with one family per acre in some districts, you would have two houses with two families, even though one of those houses is smaller. So it would have, could have an impact on the overall character of the zoning district.
The other thing that I did read when I was reading this one, it kind of, I don't know, took me back on, but the, the tiny home craze.
We're just gonna say that.
You know, I mean, I don't get it personally, that I couldn't stand it. My, my house is too small, it is, and it's not large for me, but it's larger than nine hundred square foot. But, uh, do we have anything in our, we don't have anything in our ordinance package that would restrict that, right?
Yeah, so right now in Sparta, the minimum square footage for a single-family home is either seven hundred and twenty square foot or seven hundred and sixty square foot.
Okay, okay.
And then if it's seven hundred and twenty square foot, then it has to be positioned on the lot in such a way that there could be an addition that brings it up to nine hundred sixty square foot, I believe.
Okay.
So it's seven hundred and twenty to nine hundred and sixty is your minimum square footage for a, a single-family home.
What if somebody had a lot large enough to where they wanted to put two tiny homes out?
Right now, I wanna be able to lot because there's only one dwelling per lot.
Yep.
I haven't had a lot of those conversations. I've only had one person, had a, a lady contact, and you wanna like, that. She was retired, she had some friends that they were all widows, and they wanted to build a little kind of tiny home and.
Community.
Village.
Yeah, and then, when I think tiny home, I don't necessarily think, maybe not tiny homes is the right word, but like seven hundred and twenty square foot houses and put three or four of them on and just kind of a, the fact of retirement community for a friend group.
We'll just continue this at some later point in time. Anybody has any other examples or maybe you come up with some more, Kevin, that, uh, other communities that have done this?
Yeah, what I can try to do is as, I know, continuing to develop the short-term rental ordinance, but maybe developing this side by side is just slowly building out a, a framework and skeleton that you guys could build off and change over the next few months.
Do you have an opportunity to talk to some of these other communities to find out what the pitfalls of this whole thing are? You know, if this kind of a copy, you know, you could explore with, with other people, other planners or maybe even, you know, township officials? You said, uh, Pearson Townships.
There may be a meeting ahead of you guys right now, so I just, at their meeting last month, had a similar conversation with them, of maybe two meetings. So we've started to put kind of that framework together for Pearson. Um, and we're starting to build off of that. So they haven't put it into effect yet. So Crockerie Township, one of the examples, that is one of the communities we serve right now. For them, one of the concerns is they only wanted it for family members. I can touch base with our main point contact there, see if they've had any issues regarding. And I can definitely try to reach out to some other communities that have regulations. And I can definitely try to reach out to some other communities that have regulations.
Is Dan Byes still the township supervisor for Pearson?
No, he just, if I remember correctly, his last day was the last planning commission, so he's, um, he's resigned and, um, they do have a new supervisor.
Cause I, I know him personally, I'm, I'm gonna reach out to him and find out what his thoughts are.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, you could definitely reach out to Dan. Um, yeah, he resigned, I think his last day was a couple of weeks ago, um, but you know, he's still staying involved.
What about Alpine? That went on walk, walk, it's south of Six Mile, but it would be something that, you know, it's got a good design to it, but they added on to the garage.
Because currently, I think Alpine doesn't allow a second dwelling. Unless it's attached to the current.
Right, this is attached.
Yeah. Because I, my son and daughter-in-law wanted to add a mother-in-law's suite, separate building, and they were told, no. It has to be attached to their current dwelling. So, and no, I wasn't moving in. Wasn't for me. I had my own place.
Public comment? Anything else that anybody would like to bring up at this point in time? What's the update on master plan? Where are we at in the process? Is it out for comment? Is it still in the comment period?
It is not for distribution yet. It should be going to the board next week, I believe, and the board will have to approve it for distribution. So once there, then we got sixty-three days, um. Um, if we do receive comments, that'll come back to the planning commission, and you guys will be able to make changes if appropriate. And then we'll have a public hearing. I think right now, board approved for distribution next week. It's September at COVID, it'll be in December, um, likely, I'm assuming adoption would happen somewhere in January or February.
Have you heard anything, Barb, from the trustees, or is, are they, they're aware that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They're ready.
They're ready? If there's anything else that we need to discuss tonight?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Your motion properly supported, any discussion, you're done. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, you go.
Kevin, we have a DVA more meeting tomorrow then?
Yes, okay.